Stay in motion carries call for a motion to enter into public session.
To move second.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Host state motion carries, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone up to tonight's board of education meeting and we're going to start off tonight with recognizing our Falcons of the Month.
Great. Before I come up when we start the Falcons of the Month, just so everybody understands in the room what we're going to do this evening. We have both the recognitions for the Falcons of the Month and we also have Colonial Village's invention convention. So after the Falcons of the Month, we're going to take a moment of a break so people can go around. Pause the meetings, people go around and here's some of the incredible inventions that are set up at those tables. There'll be punch and cookies and individuals can certainly leave at any point after that if they'd like stay for the rest of our meeting. Our board president will then call our meeting back to order probably about fifteen twenty minutes after all that gets underway. Okay? Great. Thank you. I know it would be surprising to most of the parents of the kids in the audience that this is one of our favorite meetings of the year. Anytime we are honoring our kids, the Board of Education loves this. I love this. These are really fun meetings for us. We usually do this once a month. So this is pretty exciting. Tonight, we have the distinction of honoring our next group of Falcons of the Month. Each school in our district celebrates numerous students each and every month for being outstanding. We've asked our schools to select one individual from the many honored to represent the group. Therefore, the students we will be honoring tonight were selected because they personified the trait or characteristic being celebrated this month. In other words, these students represent the best of the best in the month. I'm going to read you the one certificate. All those certificates are the same and then I'll be calling students up one at a time. When I call you up, our Falcons of the Month, I'm going to shake your hand. I'm going to give you the certificate. And then you're going to walk down and you're going to shake the hands of everybody at the table and then you can return to your seat. Okay? So you'll come to me first. So this certificate of recognition, whereas the philosophy of education, the Niagara Weefield Central School District, calls for aiding all students in the development and achievement of their potential. And whereas the primary goals of the school district include encouraging each student to develop a sense of values, instill a feeling of responsibility to self and to others, as well as an appreciation of good citizenship. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Niagara Weefield Central School District hereby recognizes the following students. Our first student tonight is Thomas Morrow. Thomas? Maybe Thomas is watching at home. So we'll make sure we get this to Thomas. If Thomas comes in a little bit later, we'll certainly get this to him. Next, we have Christopher Luciano Capacilli. Nice job. Next, we have Aria Orobachian. Next, a student I've had the pleasure of working with for the past few years, Amaya Henderson. Next, we have Dominic Miller. Next, we have Xavier Jacobs. And now we have James Yarger III. One more big round of applause for all of our Falcons. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sheehan and Ms. Knowle.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Sheehan. I'm a special education teacher at Colonial Village Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Christina Mullet. I'm a second grade teacher at Colonial Village Elementary. And this year Colonial Village hosted its annual invention convention on Thursday, February twenty seventh. This year, we had twenty seven inventions and about forty five inventors participating across the building. We had five inventors from kindergarten, one inventor from first grade, nine inventors from second grade, seven inventors from third grade, twelve inventors from fourth grade, and ten inventors from fifth grade. Congratulations to all of our students who took the challenge and participated in this year's invention convention. Our students work hard identifying a real life problem, creating a solution, designing and constructing a prototype, and displaying their materials and projects. We'd like to thank all of our inventors and their families for their hard work and dedication. This could not be possible without you and your help from home. Individual awards were presented to all of our inventors, followed by a staff choice award. We, one was presented to Sienna Miller and Dominic Miller for the invention of cup umbrella. We have their invention with us this evening. And Emma Kirsten and London Santaro for their invention of juicy drain. We have their invention with us this evening also. We also have ten inventions moving on to the Western New York Invention Convention, which will be held in the end of, end of March at the Buffalo Museum of Science. And they will be competing with other local school districts and other inventors.
So tonight here we have sixteen inventors. Some couldn't make it due to illness last minute. But they'll be representing our school Colonial Village. And we'd like to have them, if you walk around in a couple of minutes, introduce themselves. They'll tell you a little bit about their invention, why they invented it. And feel free to ask them questions because they're used to it from our event that we had a couple of weeks ago at our school. So we're very proud of them. Thank you for allowing us to showcase our students and our inventions this year. And feel free to take a look and roam around. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the coming out tonight and congrats once again to our Falcons of the Month and our great inventors. And we'll take a fifteen minute recess. There's some refreshments in the back, some bunch of cookies. So help yourself to those. Take some pictures over here if you'd like. And then check out the inventions and we'll resume the regular rest of the meeting in about fifteen minutes. And thank you to all family and friends and our great students for coming out tonight. Appreciate you. Thanks. Moving on to, let's see, pervert of the floor, no one signed up for residents comments. Moving to our consensus agenda items, I'll call for a motion. For the consensus agenda items, numbers one through fourteen as presented, motion for approval.
Second.
Been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Host stand motion carries. Moving to our personal items, I'll call for a motion to approve personal items, one through fifteen as presented.
Second.
Then move in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Host stand motion carries. Nothing from our standing committees. Now, external communications, ex officio student membership for Jonah.
Right, so. The first, I guess, smaller recommendation, but given it's the weather, being warmer and even despite that, just in general, a lot of people have been recommending that we have some sort of water cup or cone, because there are dispensers in the school, but they're not filled. And a lot of people just want water. It's, you know, it's nothing I'd say urgent, but it's definitely something someone or some groups of people would enjoy. I guess benefit from especially, you know, after school, if they forget water and they can just run into the cafeteria and just have a water cup, you know, it doesn't have to be anything large necessarily, large scale. It could just be simple as cafeteria. And then another thing, there have been more, I guess, vandalizations and closing of bathrooms, the boys bathrooms specifically. So this is just a personal recommendation. I feel that we have the sign out system and we have the pass system, but I feel that being stricter with those things, making the teachers making sure that kids are signing out and putting the times and what they need to put out, as well as making sure that they have passes available, because some teachers just don't have passes. And they'll have them, but they'll forget to replenish them because they'll get mixed up with another class in the bathroom or something. As well as hall monitors, people who are on hall duty, just they don't have to parade kids obviously, but just make sure that kids have passes and aren't just running halls, because that's very frequent and common occurrence now. And the third thing, it's not necessarily anything big, but people have been talking about the quality of the chicken sandwiches and chicken patties, just about the, I guess, quality of the meat. Hasn't been too, I guess, ideal for some people, but again, that's just preference. So it's not hurting, but all in all, water cups for the water fountains and just, I'd say more strict bathroom signing out and attendance protocol, just so that we can keep them open because everybody needs a bathroom, you know, you can't have people not use the bathroom or have to go across the school to do so. So I think in doing so or increasing the security would definitely prevent that from happening as frequently. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have nothing for president's report to superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you. First, I want to start by thanking all of the law enforcement who participated in the, we have over thirty law enforcement personnel and U.S. personnel participate in our travels that we had on March seventh. We did active shooter drills at both Colonial Village and Houstrowara and we've been doing this for a number of years now and each time we do it, we learn a little bit more. We had certain areas that we were targeting as a district that we were looking at some of the new security protocols that we've put in place over the years. So we're testing those. Law enforcement, of course, is testing things on their side. But what's really incredible and important is the work that we get to do with the law enforcement agencies. And remember, you know, like schools, there's always turnover, right? So if you have new officers, those new officers maybe haven't been through the training. As a district, they may never have been inside our school walls. And so, you know, having an opportunity to be inside our schools to practice events like these, anytime there is any kind of event where they need to respond, they have a better idea of where the school is, how to move about inside the school. So we thank them for all the time. I know I said something last meeting, but the time that they put in to prepare the drill, time that they spent at the drill, the time that they spend with us, some of the officers staying to debrief our staff after those meetings, it's really incredible and we appreciate everything that they do for us all the time. The next big event we have going on through our CDEP committee is on April twenty sixth. So on April twenty sixth, the Saturday, from eight to eleven, here right outside the ALC, we will be doing our twelfth biannual Eco Campus Project. That's from eight to eleven and then from eleven until one, we have the Wellness Fair and Wellness Walk. Okay, so that's a really big day for us, for our students. I know Jonah will be working to help us kind of get students here to take part. It's a great opportunity for students who need hours. You know, you think about it, you get a big chunk of, there's some volunteer hours that day. If students come eight o'clock and they're here till one, that's five hours worth. This year at the Wellness Fair, I know that they're going to have at least a food truck, if not multiple. So students are staying throughout that time. They'll certainly get food if they want to. We're really excited about it and we're looking forward to doing some work on some of the Hugel culture areas that we built up last, last spring. So that's something we're really excited about. The auditorium, if you haven't driven by recently, drive by during the day, it's looking more and more like an auditorium, not just a big hole in our wall. The steelwork is expected to be finished by the end of April, this Monday, some of the largest pieces of steel in this project are going up. They're about a hundred foot long steel beams. So that's exciting. That'll kind of define the balcony section of our auditorium. And last, I wanted to, I had sent a video to Mr. Coin there. A couple of meetings ago, the February meeting, we honored one of our students here as a Falcon of the Month. The student's name is William Rutland. William was honored by some, the local fire department for their work and was on this TV show today. Heard that this link was going to be up, so I wanted to share it. If you can, if we can play it, great. If not, I think there's some photos. At least we can see. Oh, I just turned something. Oh yeah, bottom, bottom right hand corner says mute.
Thanks. And everybody plus is bringing their eating bootcamps to Buffalo. We have details on where you can find them. It's all coming up right now on Free Head Buffalo. Good afternoon. Hello and welcome to Daytime Buffalo. I'm your host, Chelsea Lavelle. Well, today I'm joined by our friend Kate Blazer from Hope Rises with an inspiring story about a local teenage hero. Welcome everyone.
Thank you. Kate, tell us you brought it today.
Yeah, we do have a hero here today. His name is William. He's sitting next to me. He is a senior locally. And this is Chief Mahoney from the Burke's Fire Department in Niagara Weefield. And we have a really great story about heroism, courage, strength, all the good things. Okay, first, William, do you want to tell us how old you are?
I'm eighteen.
Okay, let's talk about what happened this morning that we turned you into a hero.
So I was coming back from a trip with my grandparents when I suddenly got behind this vehicle pulled out of the parking lot. And he was driving down the road real erratically, came to a stoplight, the car seemed to kind of turn off for a second, came back on and kept driving erratically, driving down the middle of the road and people's front yards and everything else. And then he went to make a turn and it ended up in a parking lot where it looked like the guy slumped over the wheel. And then right after that, the car started rolling and then it just went off the side of the bridge.
So what happened? What did you do?
My first reaction was to try to get the man out of the car. I had experience over spring break, me and my buddies actually had similar situation, but I knew something wasn't right and I knew that it could have had very bad consequences.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about the situation, Chief Mahoney. I'll go to you. Do you want to explain what happened and what it meant that William jumped in and got involved?
Of course. Yeah, so this was December twenty ninth, around two o'clock in the afternoon. A lot of people were watching the Bills Jets game, as I was. So we were dispatched for, for a car that was on its roof underwater in a creek with entrapment. So for me, that's, that's a nightmare type of situation. We, we actually got word in the one text message that we get, there was a passenger by that was attempting to free the occupant, which we then later learned was William. So I left the house that day with a window punch and I was prepared to get wet and I was fully expecting a very unpleasant experience, because being upside down in a body of water, even if you have some protection from your glass or your car door. We all know at some point those cars aren't waterproof, right? So, so we're very lucky. But the situation, I know William it seems like really with no hesitation, got himself in the water to, to try to free this fellow. Broke a window, you know, we injured his hand a little bit as a result. We're very lucky in Weefield, we've got great coverage with the Niagara County Sheriff's Office. So the two deputies there very quickly afterwards, same with them. They were all in the water right away with some tools also. And that's, that's ultimately led us to be a successful outcome for everyone.
Okay, so how are you able to get the passenger out of the vehicle?
I wasn't able to. All I was able to do is I broke the rear window and I was trying to break the window on the backseat, but I wasn't quick enough. The cops got there before I was able to.
Okay, but you sprung into action just like that. That could have been a really scary situation. What was going through your mind?
I just, my first thought was there was a life at stake and I wanted to try to do whatever I could to help out.
Do you want to give some insight on how critical William jumping into action was to assisting and freeing the passenger?
Sure. Well, obviously, speed is, is a huge issue with a cop like this, because you, you know, again, when you're, our, our, our occupant is hanging upside down in a body of water, seatbelted in, I mean, it's, it's, it's really a tough situation. So, you know, obviously, generally speaking, you know, we want people to be very careful about what they do. I, it sounded like William kind of assessed the situation, made sure that he wasn't going to add himself to the, to the victim type situation. I think he was pretty cautious with that. So but yeah, you know, those efforts happening quickly were certainly critical.
So did this person come out okay?
He did. Yeah, the, once the deputies were able to free him with assistance, he, he walked up out of the, off the bank and yeah. Yeah. So generally, generally speaking, turned out well, I mean, was obviously suffering from some health related issues that day, but, but yeah, we were very, very fortunate with that, that outcome. And that's why, you know, from my perspective, I, I wanted to call it out, you know, deputies Kennedy and Burke were quick to jump in the water and effectuate that rescue. William obviously was on a cold December day.
So how was William being recognized by the community?
Yeah, I think he received some awards from your department, correct?
We did, yeah.
Yeah. And then also, he hasn't all about this yet, but we have a program through William Matar. It's called Champions of Western New York. We recognize youth that are doing good. William Matar is a part of this. And so we are going to give you money toward a charity of your choice. So we'll talk more about that. Any charity in Western New York that you would like to select will receive a check from Hope Rises and William Matar. We're also going to share your story on Hope Rises and William Matar and have a big celebration in the fall for your, for your heroism and your courage and strength and something we wanted to share with you today, but we're just so proud to display this amazing story.
Thank you so much.
What does it mean for you to be recognized while just doing something that seemed to come naturally for you?
It means a lot more than I could ever imagine. I never thought that it would go this far. I never thought I'd be sitting here. I was just trying to help out. I was trying to do what I thought was right.
That's right. You did it. And you did, you did the right thing. And we're so glad to celebrate you so young and springing into action in a very scary situation. So viewers, if you would like to learn more about inspiring stories like this, why don't you connect with Hope Rises on Facebook and Instagram at Hope Rises Network. Good to go.
And that's all I have.
Thank you for your report. Yeah, very inspiring. Appreciate the effort made by William. Great representation of Niagara Weefield and very proud of it. So with that, we'll move on to our reports to the board of finance and budget presentation.
Okay, thank you. This is, I think, our fourth presentation, so I'm going to move through some of these slides rather quickly. They haven't changed. First one about zero buses. We've talked about this. Just one thing I do want to point out is that the legislature is still working on some of these really important legislative priorities. We should have legislative budget by April first, but there's some priorities that are still being worked out in both the Senate, the state senate and the governor have some things that they've agreed on as far as what the governor put out in her initial budget. And so that's really good. Same thing with the assembly. We'll see where they end up, you know, hopefully by April first, if not sooner. These are just some of the numbers of the overall budget. For anybody who's tuning in for the first time tonight, if you go back to our last few board meetings, you could see a presentation, a more extensive presentation on the entire budget. This right here is a breakdown. You can see of the executive budget estimates and their impact on our district. On the far right hand top corner, you'll see eight point ninety percent. That's the foundation increase. That's right now projected for our district in the executive budget. What I'll tell you is that both the assembly and the senate have talked about numbers for the overall education budget that are higher than what the governors put out. So we'll see where those land. I wouldn't necessarily expect anything additional to happen to our foundation aid budget. We'll see. This here is the levy limit. The board has seen this number before, that zero point six four percent number is the amount that the board can put out to the voters without having to have a super majority vote this year. And that's zero point six four percent. This is the, this is the ERS rates that we have to budget for. You can see the ERS rate is projected to go up by one point three percent. The TRS rate is going down for next year. The tax levy review, this kind of gives you a breakdown of where we've been the last eight years, including twenty four, twenty five, the current year. So the, the levy increase average has been one point nine four percent over that time period. This is a breakdown of the revenue budget. Again, we went through this before. And here's a breakdown that really shows. If you look in that far right hand column, it shows you the percentage of the revenues and where, where they come from. So in our district, forty one point two percent comes from real property taxes. If you jump over to foundation aid, that's twenty nine point two percent, right? The total state aid is a forty four point eight percent. So just when you kind of get in The total state aid is a forty-four point eight percent, so just when you kind of get an idea of where do our revenues come from to, to meet our expenditure budget, you, you can see that here. Um, the expenditure budget that we're presenting is ninety-one million, ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The, the revenue budget itself is eighty-four million, eight, seven, eight, seven, six, five, five. So you say, well, where are you coming up with that six point, uh, three million, right? The, we're gonna move money to pay for the capital transportation needs that we have, new buses in the amount of nine hundred and forty-six thousand, we're gonna move money from our capital technology reserve to, to continue to update and upgrade our technology in the district in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, and the Greenway bond is an interfund transfer that eight hundred thousand dollars, um, is being over, that's being used to pay for the Greenway project work that we were approved um, to do and to utilize the funds that are part of the host community funds. Okay, the balance to fund then becomes four point three six six. Um, the rest of the, it will be balanced with five hundred thousand dollars from workers' comp, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from employee benefits reserve, seven fifty from both ERS and TRS, which means that the appropriated fund balance amount will be, would be one point nine a million dollars, okay, which is less than what we actually had, what we appropriated last year. These are the reserve numbers, these were up there last time, just important to know that, um, this, these are the reserves, if all of the reserves that we budgeted to use in twenty-four, twenty-five are actually used at the end of June twenty-five, which we don't expect to happen. Okay, we don't expect to have to dip into all those, so our reserves should be higher than this come years end. Remember, when we apply reserves, we're hoping not to have to expend all those reserves, except for the ones that are dollar for dollar paying for something like buses, right? Makes sense? So, we don't expect to have, have, have to use in twenty-four, twenty-five, all of the ERS reserve funds and all the TRS reserve funds that we attributed to this year's budget, so that means we'll still have additional reserves than what you see here in these numbers, okay? So here was just a breakdown, um, that Allison had put together, you can see though, the levy limit is the one that's highlighted there in the middle, that zero point six four percent shows you what that amount is, um, and then if you, each of the numbers, if you look at the percent levy increase on the left-hand side, then tra- translates into the nine-year average all the way over to the right-hand side. Everybody follow that, okay? This is our fiscal stress, um, our fiscal stress in twenty-three, twenty-four was zero percent. Um, and you, all of you know that in thirteen, fourteen, eighty-eight point three was the highest fiscally stressed district in New York State, we were. So, um, a lot of work's been done, obviously, by you and by the business office to get us in a position where we're not in that position anymore. So, two, two things that, um, I would ask you to discuss and then decide if you want to, if you're gonna act on tonight, one is the levy limit. But, the, the levy, that's the levy limit, um, is zero point six four percent, and then the other one is the expenditure budget as, as it's been presented. So, if you have any questions about any of the slides here, let me know, I'll take this with me, because if you want to go back to any of these slides, I can help with that.
Yeah, open up a discussion on, your thoughts on the levy and the amount or? Yeah, so each year, um,
This is probably gonna be one of the
Yeah, I was gonna say, sometimes, the way the, the, the state comes in and perform on, it gives us our limits, sometimes it makes our work a little bit easier, harder, depending on where it lands. Um, so it's, you know, such a low limit as it is, um, you know, point six four percent increase, I mean, if you look back on that chart, then
the last one.
Nope, no, this, this one.
Yeah, the levy limits.
This one right here?
No, I think
The bar, the bar graph.
The bar graph and the line graph.
That's right now.
Put together.
So this, this one at the top of each one of these bar graphs shows you what the percentage was for that year, two nine nine, two one eight.
Two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, you can see, yeah.
You're probably close to where we are right now.
Yeah.
So we're making a, it's gonna be a substantial rap. Good. I don't think we should go over it.
No.
I mean, it sounds like we're all comfortable with being at the limit, is that? And, um, I mean, with that, I would make a motion that we set, uh, the tax levy, um, at that thirty-seven million, five hundred and six, uh, thousand, seven hundred dollar amount. Somebody like to make the motion? Motion?
Yeah.
Okay, motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Host, stand, okay, motion carries.
Then, if you wanted to talk about
The expenditure budget?
I mean, I put it up this way and this way, excuse me, or I'm gonna say for this number here.
That problem, yeah.
Yeah.
They have any other feelings prior to that, or is everyone? Other comments?
Actually got us here.
So, yeah, yeah, two, two things, um, one, one, understand that as part of this, this budget, the, the, the revenue side of it, that foundation aid number really put us in a position where we're, we're able, you know, we would have had to probably look at some additional funding, or we would have had to apply even more of our reserves. Foundation aid number certainly helped us this year significantly with that. The one question that, um, that might be going on in your head is, you know, what, what if, what, what if something happens like at the federal level? The one thing that is just, so I can understand being talked about, um, with title funds is the Title II funds. As a district, and those are like the professional development funds, they're just not significant. So if, if for any reason that funding changed at the federal level, I don't know if the state would do anything different, right? Um, but it, it's a dollar amount that we could figure out within our budget, okay, with this budget number. Um, so, um, we, we would be, we would be okay anyway, so if somebody was expecting a simple tease, what would happen if you, we would just be able to make it work within that budget if that small funding stream for the Title II funds didn't come in?
All right, um, if there's no other thoughts or comments, I'll call for a motion to accept the expenditure budget as presented in the amount of ninety-one million, ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Host, stand, motion carries. Thank you. With that, uh, any public comments? Any board member comments tonight?
I just, I'd like to just congratulate all the Falcons of the Month and our convention, convention, uh, students, uh, they did a really nice presentation tonight.
Yes. Um, I'll second that, and, um, yeah, thank you to our business department for putting together, doing all the work, the budgets and department heads. I appreciate all the work that goes into that. And with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
To move.
They're moving second.